First. You ready here on? [S01] Yes ma'am. [S01] Okay. We will call this meeting to order. Please begin with me with the pledge and the prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the VV and Texas, one state, under God, one unity, indivisible.
Councilmember Stuart, would you lead us in prayer tonight, please?
Yes ma'am. Heavenly Father, we thank you for who you are, that you are our Savior and our salvation, Lord. We just thank you so much for the promises that you have made to us. But we ask that you're with us tonight as we conduct the business of our city, that we do so with compassion and understanding and do what's best for each of our community members. Lord, we just thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to come to an open forum like this and to speak and to be free. Lord, we just ask that you're with our first responders as they protect us day in and day out through thick and thin. Lord, we just thank you so much for the rain that you've sent. We ask for more, just none of the hail or the mean stuff that comes with it. Lord, we just thank you so much for what you provided for us. These things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Andrea, do you have any state citizen?
We do not ma'am.
Okay. I think we have one special presentation.
Counsel, I would like to introduce Matt Murray. He is a new attorney with us. He'll be living in Canyon and he and I will be splitting up a lot of the work that we do, but he's got a lot of experience. Nine years at the City Attorney's Office in Fort Worth, kind of went through all of their different divisions. They have forty lawyers. I mean, that's as big as our firm almost. And he had moved up into management, but he and his wife grew up in Pampa and were ready to come back home with their four kids. And so we're calling him our number one draft pick and we got him signed. So I just wanted y'all to know who he was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. And at this time, we will have a presentation by South Plains Community Action Association about Spartan Transportation.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Samantha Mendoza with South Plains Community Action Association. She has got some great things going on at Spartan Transportation. You've got some invitations at your seats and I will turn it over to Samantha.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate y'all taking the time to hear us out. I'm sorry, I'm short. I gotta lower it for my height. I'm the Communications Director. My name is Samantha of South Plains Community Action Association. I want to talk today specifically about our Transit Division, Spartan Transportation. You all are probably very familiar with Spartan. Spartan Transportation, our headquarters is here down 115, real close by. You'll probably also see the Spartan buses driving around town, driving all across the South Plains area. For those who aren't too familiar in the audience maybe with Spartan Transportation, I'll give a little bit of a general overview. It's really important, rural public transportation. So we are a rural public transportation provider. Anyone and everyone can ride with Spartan. It's open to the general public. So it's not, you know, you don't have to be elderly or have a disability or be on Medicaid. Really, anybody can ride. And it's a great option, especially for our rural counties and our rural cities, our smaller towns. So we have this saying here at Spartan and at SPCA in general where we say where the distances are vast, but the need is even greater. So when we're talking about the South Plains, the beautiful thing about the South Plains is that it's made up of tons of really close-knit communities like Levelland, obviously. But the downside is that sometimes these communities, these counties especially, are very far and spread apart. So that's where Spartan comes in to fill in that gap and provide that transportation to get you from point A to point B. It's a great option in terms of enhancing accessibility for especially our individuals who might have a lack of access to transportation to get the things like medical care to some of those larger metropolitan areas if they work there, even family and friends, right? So anyone can ride with Spartan, which means that you can ride for any reason, retail shopping, errands, what have you. And so economic benefits, of course, strengthening our workforce, getting people to and from work. We have tons of business routes with Spartan. We have the cargo route that you might be familiar with. It's affordable, way, way more affordable. So even in Lubbock and Amarillo and some of those bigger metropolitan areas, Uber and Lyft are quite expensive. And I'll get into later on in the presentation on some of our more affordable options for on-demand service. It's also supporting our aging populations. As we know, the population in general, not just in Levelland or Texas, but all across the country, our population is getting older and it's not necessarily feasible for them to be behind the wheel every day. And of course, we're promoting growth and sustainability, trying to connect those seventeen counties in our rural transit districts. So we are part of the South Plains Rural Transit District. There's our service map right there. It's seventeen counties. It's about fifteen thousand square miles. So that's pretty, pretty big. It's bigger than some European countries. And if you've ever been to New Jersey, it's bigger than the state of New Jersey as well. So just a little fun fact for you. Saturday service is formatted a little bit weird, but a Saturday service is a new update that we have. We've had it for a few months. It's exclusive to Levelland and Plainview. So you can see there on the flyer, "Ride for only $1 in Levelland and Plainview." So we had a high demand from our Levelland and Plainview citizens, especially those individuals who needed to get to work on Saturday. So we decided to launch this Saturday service a few months back. We've had lots of success in Plainview, but not as much success in Levelland as we were hoping. We're not too sure why, so we would love if you have any input, if you know any local business leaders or employers in town that are struggling to get their staff or employees to work, definitely send them our way. Like I said, we have those business routes and those business contracts that we fulfill at Spartan. But it's, like I said, for anyone in town trips, shopping, errands, if you know somebody does their groceries, their United Run or their Walmart run on Saturdays, and they don't have reliable transportation, definitely feel free to send them our way. And like I said, that's only a dollar each way, so pretty, pretty affordable. More exciting news. So this is a launch that we're having, our new same-day rider app. So if you are familiar with Uber and Lyft, where you just download an app and request a ride on demand on your phone, you'll be able to do the same with Spartan. So with our Q Ride app is what it's called up there. It's the new software that we're launching. You'll be able to just download the app, create an account, register and add Spartan same-day as the community, and you'll be able to book a ride on demand right then and there. Once again, it's exclusive to our Levelland citizens, so we're kind of launching this. We're very, very hopeful and excited. In-town trips, once again, only for this service. And we are promoting free summer rides, so free rides all summer long. It's Monday through Saturday, our Saturday service, and it's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. So if you know anybody who is needing a ride and if they can't afford absolutely anything, let them know that we are doing free rides all summer long. Once again, formatted a little weird, but we've got our customer portal and new website. So another update that we have with our Spartan Transportation program is the customer portal and our new Spartan website. So if you had been on the Spartan website in previous years, it was a little bit outdated. So if you go on now, it's got a new look, it's revamped, and it's also linked to our new customer portal. So back in the day when you needed to book a ride with Spartan, you'd have to pick up the phone, dial and talk to a scheduler. Now you can just go on your laptop, go on your desktop, go on the Spartan website and book a ride for yourself. You can book, manage, even cancel your trips on there. You can book reoccurring trips, pay for everything, all on the portal. So it's streamlined, very efficient. We're hoping it encourages especially our caseworkers, social workers, individuals who need to book rides on behalf of their clients, for instance. We're hoping that it makes it a little bit easier for them. In addition to the customer portal, a new website, same-day app, all of that good stuff, we have a rebrand called the Plains Trails Transit Launch. So Plains Trails Transit is essentially, it's powered by Spartan Transportation. It's just a brand, an offshoot brand of the Spartan program. We are going to have some new vehicle wraps as well, so if you see the Spartan bus looking a little bit different around town, that's what that's about. The idea behind the Plains Trails Transit was we had all of these new and exciting service updates, and we wanted to make sure that we were also paying homage to the beauty of the plains, the South Plains, the area that we care so much about, obviously being the main transit provider in the South Plains Rural Transit District. We wanted to just make sure that we were honoring that beauty of the plains trails as well. So you might see some new branding here and there. You're also invited. Formatted a little weird again, but I left some invites there for y'all. We're having a ribbon-cutting ceremony, a summer solstice celebration. So on the longest day of the year, which is going to be this Friday, we're having a little summer solstice ribbon-cutting over at Spartan. Starts at 10:00 a.m. We're going to have a little bit of demonstrations of the app. We're going to give you a little bit of a walkthrough of the same-day vehicle. We're going to have some guest speakers, refreshments and whatnot. So you're all invited. You guys as well are invited. I'll leave some extra invites with Andrea if y'all are interested. And then we'd also love to do something like an inaugural ride with the city council. So I think I spoke to your city manager about this way, way, way back when this was first, just kind of the inception of the same-day service idea. But we would love to be able to give you guys a demo of the app, so you're familiar with it. When your constituents come and talk to you about it, we want you to know that you're familiar with the app and you're able to talk to them about it. So we'd love to invite you to come on by to Spartan, or we can come to the city council as well, City Hall, give you a little demo about the app, and then you can have a book, the app, book a trip through the app yourself, and then, you know, spotlight a small business of your choice where we can take you to lunch, or, you know, if you want to do some retail shopping or what have you. I think it'd be a good idea to spotlight a local business in Levelland while also kind of promoting the same-day app as well. So details to be determined. We'd love to get in touch about that. But in the meantime, do you guys have any questions for me right now?
Samantha, will y'all pick up a minor, an unaccompanied minor?
Yes, we can. We need parental permission, I believe, first and to get some forms signed probably, but I believe we have done those.
Just wondering if you could pick up a minor and take them to like the school lunch program during the summer or take them to practice at the high school strength and conditioning camp.
Yeah, that's a great question. I would defer to Brian, who's our Spartan Director, Brian Baker, but I'm pretty sure that that can be worked out with parental permission, yes.
Even the city pool.
Yeah. Questions?
Go kind of hand-in-hand with, y'all pick up, I rode Spartan from Whiteface to Levelland my whole elementary career. So kind of like that, right?
Yeah, so that's our school tripper route. So we have those, yeah, the school tripper routes. So I mean, we've done them before. Similar, yeah, similar forms, probably just need, yeah, parent or guardian signature, most likely.
Strength and conditioning camp. We may be a little late to it now, but for next summer, some of the coaches could have that set up and you can maybe sign up before school was out to be picked up.
Absolutely.
Drunk off that much. It'd be really cool.
That's a great idea. We'll definitely be in touch about that. I'll let Brian know. Any other awesome questions?
Thank you for starting this in Levelland.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, we're headquartered here. We try to do everything locally first and, you know, give our citizens the perks first before we workshop it anywhere else. All right, well, I'm going to leave the invitations with Andrea. If y'all don't have any more questions and you think of something later, she has my information, as does Councilman Powell, I'm sure. So send them, send me in my way. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That was great.
Awesome.
Our next item is to consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of May 19th, 2025 regular meeting in the June 2nd, 2025 regular meeting.
Do we accept the minutes of the May 19th, 2025 regular meeting and the June 2nd, 2025 regular meeting?
Okay. We have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
With that, now oppose the motion will carry. Next item is consider and take necessary action to approve a special event application for the Wallace Theater.
Mayor, members of council, you have before you a special event application for the Wallace Theater. We have two representatives from that event. I know we're all excited about the Wallace getting open and the many exciting things that they're happy they're going to be going on there. So their event is scheduled for Saturday, September 20th, the Red Carpet Affair. There's a lot that's going on with that event. I know it also coincides with Cotton and Crude the same evening, and we're working through all of the festive challenges that go with this. If y'all okay, I'd like to turn it over to Allison or whoever which one wants to run with this thing and talk about it.
Whoever their representative is.
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank y'all so much for having us and for your consideration and for your service to the community. We are so excited to take this next step for the Wallace. The application that you have before you is actually for our grand opening celebration. We are in the last phases of finishing up our renovations. Over the next few months, we are going to be hosting a few soft opening events, and the September 28th is our official big celebration. This is absolutely an event that is ten years in the making, that's brought over $3 million into this community from outside and is already continuing to bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars that is going to continue to go back and serve our community. Our event on September 20th is going to consist of a concert event inside the Wallace Theater. We are expecting a large crowd for this event, so our request is also that we close off the street between, on Avenue H, between us and Studebakers so that we are able to have a tent. With having a concert event inside the Wallace, we do not have the space to be able to set up tables and chairs for people to sit down and eat. And so what we are wanting to have in the street section is the opportunity to set up a tent and to have people be able to cross between the Wallace Theater and Studebakers. And I'd love to entertain any questions that anyone has about the event. Really, how we got to the date that was chosen, this is something that we have been looking at for over a year, as we've kind of been watching when our renovations were going to be able to get to the completion stage. One of the first things we were waiting to find out was the Texas Tech football schedule. We all know unfortunately that's kind of a behemoth that we absolutely have to work around. When the board started to consider our date options, we had been looking at September 20th. We had been in communication with the Chamber of Commerce and knew we were looking at the same date. The Wallace Theater also looked at multiple dates. September 20th was always the date that made the most sense for our organization, from donors and other individuals that we actually have traveling in for this event, and then also from our staffing standpoint. We looked at additional dates that were not ideal for all of us, but this is the date that we realized was really going to be the best opportunity for us.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the person on staff who has the first direct contact with our special events that apply in the city, certainly for our new members who haven't been through this process before, we have a special events process, and what is considered a special event or what has to go through the process is if you plan to have a public event that might have 200 people or more, if you want to close a street, or if you want to serve alcohol. Typically, you guys don't see it until they want to serve alcohol or they want to close a state highway. A lot of those downtown events want to close Houston and Avenue H, and so we come to you asking to close a state highway. So they're not asking to close a state highway. The reason we're bringing this to you, and it came past the Special Events Committee to you, is because they have an alcohol component to their event, and they would have alcohol being served at Studebakers and the Wallace, if I understand correctly, and perhaps in the tent that would be in the street between the two businesses. So that is the reason this comes to you. If it were an event that didn't have an alcohol component, it may have been an event that we just approved in the special events and then said, hey, guess what we did? If it were an event that didn't have an alcohol component, it may have been an event that we just approved in the special events and then said, hey, guess what we did? But it comes to you, uh, specifically by ordinance because of the alcohol component.
So number one, so, so excited that the Wallace is, is, it's really gonna happen.
It really is gonna happen. 10 years in the making, maybe a few more than that, but I've been working on it for over 10 years. I think so.
We're so thankful and so excited. I, I, the only negative is that they're on the same day and that I'm, I'm just gonna have to choose. I don't see how I can be both places at once.
Well, I actually do think there are opportunities. Um, I know the headliner for Cotton and Crude comes on later in the evening. So I think there absolutely are opportunities for people to come to our event, go to that one or vice versa, depending on what you're looking at at the lineup. And something I think that's really exciting for our community as a whole. I mean, I know there's also events going on at the Mallet Event Center that day. Wow, what an incredible place we're in as a community to have all of these opportunities to be, bring people into our town. Um, I know we've, we're already looking at people from nine different states that are looking to travel in for, um, our event alone. So I'm so excited that they're gonna get to come in and see the absolute best of Levelland, Texas.
I think the only concern that, that's been brought up is how are we gonna keep all these events safe? I do not have the ins and outs on that because I know nothing about how to do that. That is not what I do. Um, does anybody else have any other questions?
Concern was the same thing in terms of, of security. Uh, and you've got two events and I guess it's a question more for, for the you got a lot of logistics that, uh, are sort of doubled up here, if you will. And I just wanna make sure that we have those kinds of issues covered before.
Yes, I could talk loud from back there. Um, we have been in communication with both Cotton and Crude and the Wallace. That was one of my concerns is, is this is an all hands on deck at Cotton and Crude. So how are we gonna deal with the Wallace, um, safety? And so um, we have agreed to work with them closely to make sure that we do have a good plan, just like we did this weekend with Juneteenth and the Mosaic Run. Uh, captains, uh, at both events, monitoring both of them. They were able to, uh, tackle both of those without any issues. And I don't think we're gonna have any issues with this one doing the same thing, having a representative here and having the majority there and then working with them to get that security taken care of.
Chief, do we have enough barricades? Do we have enough supplies? And the New Orleans events, all those things are, you know, the world has changed.
So the barricades is not necessarily my, um, alley, I guess, up my alley, but
Working on that.
We've, we've got plenty.
But I will say with Cotton and Crude not being in a roadway, it being in a parking lot area, that definitely helps that situation a lot as well.
With safety being everybody's main concern in, in general, as the police chief, you do not see an issue having both on the same day?
I am committed to working with both entities to make it work on that same day.
And you feel comfortable making that call today? You don't feel like you need any more time to be able to discuss? I just wanna give all the
Absolutely. This has been about a month of discussions of going forward. And so, um, because the first time it came across events committee, I was like, whoa, hold up. Like, how are we gonna do this? Like, this is not gonna work. Um, but we've absolutely committed to making that communication work and making the right, um, security plan for both of those.
Cause we're also not trying to put too much on the police department.
And I definitely appreciate that.
And the fire department.
There's still gonna be citizens out on the road that might, might be speeding.
That might need our help.
Yeah, as long as the whole community is covered and the two.
Yes.
You're not gonna go from one event to another and back and back?
I'm gonna use the Spartan service.
They end at five o'clock, Samantha said.
I'll hold it to that, Mr. Fisher.
Oh, he'll open it up for us. He just did. Barknit is.
Um, and I also want to reiterate on our end, we are overly committed to whatever we can do um, to support the ci- city and make sure we don't add any strain on, um, our incredible officers and the teams that would be setting this up. In fact, we've even offered, um, you know, if we need to hire in additional security, we will be more than willing to do that. Um, and we can also work with the city for anything that we need to do from the barricade standpoint as well.
So it is a, uh, events application that needs approval. Any more questions or, or comments on, on this? I, I had wondered if we needed to table it. I didn't know if the police chief would want to communicate with you guys further, but she is, she's here and has stated that she, um, she feels good about it. Mr. Fisher, you see anything else that we need to discuss that regarding this permit?
No ma'am, I think between, this is something we'll continue to look at. On the July 7th, you will have the, uh, application for, uh, Cotton Crude. It didn't come in until after, uh, we had already set the agenda. So that's why they weren't together. But I know our staff's been working very closely on that one as well. Um, so I feel confident we can handle it. It's, it's gonna be a
Gonna be a day.
It's gonna be a day. Yeah. To that point that we get to show the absolute best Levelland. And I think if we promote it well, uh, we might bring in even more people that have it. I mean, we could put something in Lovey on, on Wednesday and say, are you trying to figure out what you wanna do this weekend? And, you know, a lot of different options for you.
Yes, to cross-publicize.
Earlier that you had been in contact or your board maybe with the chamber. So this isn't blindsiding at all.
Correct, correct. That we, we were having discussions in December and January, um, knowing that we were gonna have, um, events.
At least close to the same day, whether it went the same route.
Any more questions? Do we have a motion?
I move the staff approver, I move to approve this application, the closure of Avenue H and the acknowledgement of pedestrians in the public street. Not worrying.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? With that motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is to consider and take necessary action on the request by Levelland Fire Department to donate excess and/or outdated rescue equipment to Texas A&amp;M Forest Service Helping Hands Organization. Chief Patty?
How are you?
Great. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us.
He beat you to the mic. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
I wanted to give you the opportunity since the other chief came up here to talk. I knew you didn't wanna be outdone, ma'am. So if you'll explain to council what you're trying to do and why.
Well, and this is why I brought Brian. So we do have some, come here, Brian. So we do have, no, we do have a rescue team. We're, uh, the, the rescue team for 13 counties. And we do have gear for that. And the gear includes helmets, harnesses, uh, rope. What else besides that?
That's it.
But it has a 10-year lifespan. And the 10 years has come up. We've already started replacing the old stuff for the new stuff. But we need to get rid of it. And we've already contacted the manufacturer and they said that, uh, cause my, my thing was can we use it for training? And they said, well, yes, you can, as long as you don't shock load it. As long as you don't think there's gonna be a fall, as long as you don't, there was things. Um, and so for liability reasons, we have decided to go ahead and donate this to the forestry service. And the forestry service is a state entity that, that will take the liability off of us and give it to somebody else. And so, um, we had said that we wanted to give it to Sundown.
Whiteface and Morton.
And Morton. And we wanted your permission to go ahead and donate the stuff that's outdated.
Through them.
So then we don't have any liability.
They also do like, right, they also do, um, like if our air packs, when they get outdated, our gear, when it gets outdated. Uh, we donate, donate it, um, to them and then they will, we can specify if we know who we want it to go to. Um, but if we don't, then they, then they send it to Lovekin and then people can go, I call it going shopping. Um, but you can go to Lovekin and you can go, I need one of those and one of those and
We're gonna go into our friends.
Right.
People who came to help us.
Right. So we've already reached out to them and they, they said they did want it. And so we would sign the forms and, but we wanted to get permission to do that.
See a thing in the world wrong with that. And thank you for coordinating with those local organizations who came to our aid.
Is that upgrade Texas A&amp;M?
Forest Service.
I would, I make a motion that we approve the donation from the Levelland Fire Department to the Forest Service Helping Hands Program.
Well, we seconded.
We have a motion, second all in favor? None opposed without the motion carries. Uh, next item on the, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking care of that. Discussion on next item is the discussion of the Levelland Community Development Corporation Board vote.
Mayor and Council, a few, about a week and a half ago, we were informed by one of our members of the LCDC, the Levelland Community Development Corporation, Bobby Neal, that he was no longer able to serve on that board. And so we've wanted to put that before you, just so you can start the wheels turning on finding somebody to appoint to that board.
Will you remind me how many years does?
They, those are two-year terms. And his would have, um, his would have expired in 2026.
So whoever we appoint to this, will they expire in 20?
They would expire in 2026 and then be up for reappointment for their two terms per ordinance for a minute. Today is just a discussion. We wanted to make you aware. We had a resignation from that board. As you know, it's an important board. It does spend part of our sales tax. Uh, and a lot of it goes to improve our parks and, uh, quality of life, uh, here in Levelland. So we know that that's gonna be a, a priority for you to find someone to appoint to that board.
LCDC meet today at lunch?
They did not. We could not get a quorum today. We were not able to get a quorum.
So are they planning to give you some ideas for who? It says here that they weren't able to meet too, but are they planning to?
If, if we can get a meeting with them, that'll be one of the things. Do they have any recommendations? If not, then
We'll come up.
I'm sure the council has some.
Oh yeah, we can figure it out.
You know, when we do the board appointment process, when we have all the boards at once, we typically advertise that. So if you find that you have, you're having trouble, we were absolutely happy to advertise that. It may be that we have people that have asked to be on that board previously. And we can go back and look at those applications, the interest forms that have been turned in. But we just wanted to put that, uh, in your head, get your wheels turning so that you could be thinking about that. And then of course, as we meet with LCDC. And that will be very soon. It's an overdue meeting. So we will.
I would like, we can put it on Facebook and say, if you're interested, send an email to the city secretary expressing your interest. That way we're not slowing down on that process. We can go ahead and put that out there, see what we can get a few there.
Absolutely. I think I'll for it.
That's what we do for the other board. So that, that's perfect. All right. Thanks so much.
Next item will be discussion about the fiscal year 2020.
Mayor and council members, this is kind of a, not kind of, this will be a standing item as we go through, just in case something comes up that, uh, we need to address with you or, or things like this. One of the things I'm gonna hand you tonight is, I sent this to you electronically sometime back, that is our 2025, uh, preliminary totals that we have received from, um, the Priceville District. I put on here in green, uh, some of the corresponding numbers from the 2024. So you can see kind of the difference in some places uh, regarding the changes. We are meeting with staff and going through this, uh, very diligently and very carefully. Uh, we're also looking uh, at our revenue and trying to, uh, get a better handle on that number as well as, as we continue to plan. A couple of things, uh, one of our budget work sessions, we had listed as July 1st. But that's also our Levelland Listens Evening. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna move Levelland Listens to City Hall. We're gonna have Levelland Listens and then we're gonna invite them to come to the budget work session at seven o'clock. You will also and the same thing will occur on, um, August 5th, cause that'll be our Levelland Listens as well. First Tuesday, we will also, uh, have that meeting here at City Hall and invite them uh, to stay if they so choose for the budget work session. The only, uh, big change to your budget calendar, uh, we originally had scheduled our meeting for July 10th. Uh, we moved it back one day to July 9th. Um, just as you guys look at your calendar, yes, we've set this, but there's gonna be things that come up that you didn't anticipate. Uh, the most important thing is we have our regularly scheduled meetings established, but our work sessions, we have dates. But we've also informed the public that if they change, we will definitely let everybody know. Uh, Ms. Corley has emailed our budget calendar out to our email list. Uh, we've posted it. So everyone is welcome to attend our budget work sessions. Uh, I know that's something that it seems like when we get to the very end, we always hear, why did you do this and why did you do that? Or why didn't you take this into account? Our work sessions are open to the public and they're encouraged to be here to help understand the information that we're presenting, understand where the council's coming from and understand what staff is trying to present. So we're trying to establish a very open format so that, uh, people can attend our budget work sessions if they so choose. Um, and they're welcome to come to any or all, but, uh, we're gonna continue to work through our budget and address, uh, the various, uh, challenges that are, are facing our community. But we do have a lot of great things happening too. We've got, uh, new businesses that are opening, that are looking at our community. We've got this, uh, ride program. That is a great positive for our community and, uh, just a lot of good things that are happening. And we need to continue to move forward and continue to make our community the community of choice for South Plains. So questions from council regarding, uh, budget or anything in particular you want us to be looking at, uh, as we prepare for any type of budget work session?
Lots of ideas for LCDC. Yes, couple spots for road repair, but I would say to council, now's the time to say anything that you would like to see to get done. And maybe that's too off the cuff, but if you have something that you've been wanting or hoping to get done now, this is, speak soon.
Yeah, magnolia.
Magnolia will be seal coat this year. And we're trying to
That's one money after bad. That's not long.
Well, well, and we know that. And that's one of the things we're looking at is, is how do we address some of these road situations instead of seal coating? But um, the challenge that you have in order to, to fix a deteriorating road, you've gotta fix any of the infrastructure that's underneath it first, which that can add two or three years to the repair. So I know people, when they look at seal coat, they're like, why are we throwing away money? Well, seal coat traditionally buys you about seven years if everything goes well. Um, I don't like throwing down seal coat either. I mean, we know we gotta repair some streets. But don't forget, we've also, uh, issued notice that we're gonna do certificates of obligations for projects that we, you know, weren't anticipating and doing right now. So we're gonna have to really take some hard looks at how we do some things and where we move some capital projects around. Um, again, we wanna be physically responsible and physically, uh, conservative. But we've also got things that have been put off for a long time. And that doesn't mean that we can afford every single one of them, but it also means we cannot kick the can down the road and say, we'll get to this one day. We've got to start working on a plan on how to address that. And, and streets are expensive.
It's about to fall apart. So I don't know that seal coat will give us much more than it's season.
It, it's gonna give us a couple of years or three. The, the, one thing we've done too is we've turned off uh, the sprinklers there where we're not running as much water into that areas. I think that'll help.
Can't hurt.
But, uh, our roads are, our streets are they're, they're hurting. So, um, but before we do that, we've gotta make sure we fix the infrastructure first. Cause we don't wanna fix a road and then tear it up and do that. So we've got a lot of big decisions and some of these in capital are gonna go beyond the budget. They'll be going on in the discussions at later dates that we develop a solid plan as we do this. But, um, we've just, we've gotta do the best we can. And I know our public, uh, is gonna ask for, for tax cuts because they're gonna like where your praise values went up. So therefore, uh, taxes should go down. And normally we try our best to to do that, but again, we've got projects. We've got street projects. We've got an animal shelter. We've got things that we have to get done. We we no longer have. We can look at this next year. We can take care of this in year two, year three. We've got to get busy on taking care of a lot of different things. And as the mayor said, fortunately, we have the LCDC, our Community Development Corporation, that is funded by a portion of our sales tax, that we can use some of those dollars to help take care of some things from park improvements to um potentially animal shelter, just other little things. Not saying they pay for all of the animal, but there may be some things that they can help with that project. Uh, so we have some funding sources out there that we can look at. Um, but we've just got to sit in and start putting all that together. And if there's things that you want us to look at very carefully, um, please tell us so we can start looking at that and help you get uh the answers that you're looking for.
Mr. Fisher, I've, and I I don't know how this relates to the budget, but I uh I've had a couple of folks approach me about code enforcement. And I don't, but I don't know where we're at without, and I have no virtually nothing about how that's done or anything else, but these folks seem to have some sort of an ax to grind on some of these kinds of things, so.
Code compliance is probably one of the biggest challenges that we have because um as you go out and try to get people to comply with our codes and regulations, there's some resistance. And sometimes some of that resistance is there's things that are grandfathered that aren't allowed today. And what they're trying to do is one of those things that we have now prohibited, and they're like, well, why did you allow it? And they give you all of this, this kind of examples. Um, I think our, the city attorney and myself share the very common belief that we're much more focused on compliance than enforcement. And and I think that's where we're trying to go is to get more people to comply. Um, we're short right now in a code compliance officer because Eli is is training to hopefully move into that building inspector role. Um, so code compliance inspections, those kind of things is not necessarily taking a backseat, but it's not right up there in front. We do know we need to get out there and look at some weeds and get some of that taken care of. But I will also say this very loudly and very clearly that if we're gonna ask our community to clean up their lots, their homes, their businesses, the city's got to take the first initiative. We cannot ask people to do things if our own properties do not look the absolute best. And we're failing in that area. I I will be the first to tell you that. But we're working on a plan to address that, to to get our stuff to where people can't look at the city and go, why are you talking to me when yours looks just as bad? If not worse.
Well, this is not, this is not my ass. I'm not grinding.
No, I understand, sir.
I am delivering a message, I hope that.
And and I've had several people call me and and express probably some of the concerns that they've shared with you, but we will get busy on it.
Just gonna add two things. One, to reinforce what you said, which is people look around and wonder. I had the situation where a guy showed up from municipal court and he brought me a list of sixty-three properties that looked worse than his. I mean, that that's what he said. And and so you you have that part of it. The other part is it is, it is a hard balance for your staff because if you don't do anything, people are upset. But if you do too much, people flip that and say, this is big government trying to to run people's lives. So James and I talked about these things and, I mean, it is a balance. Um, but yeah, I I do know from from my people in municipal court um that are working with y'all's people that it, they are paying attention to it. We will continue to to help where we can.
I'll try to argue, listen, I I I know what what you're up against. It's not anything easy to take on. Again, trying to make sure that these kinds of things are at least on the agenda.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate it. And you can tell all complaints are handled by the office of the mayor pro tem. And so you can send them all that direction and he will.
I'll discover that in a minute.
And Bill, they're they're wanting more code enforcement?
No, I, you know, I think there's, I think there's isolated incidents around uh around town where people, and and it has to do more with having businesses as opposed to weeds and those kinds of things. There there are businesses being operated out of residential places and, you know, and and they create, well, the one that, you know, they use the alley back and forth uh to their business. And it's and it's a truck, trucks going up and down residential alleys and and they're in business.
Home home businesses are always the toughest to regulate. Uh, y'all just came out of a a zoning work session and that's one area where you you try, one of your first tools is to tighten it up in that zoning category of what is allowed as a home business. But it it is a very, very tough animal because some people use their home business to eventually go out and find a brick and mortar and start one somewhere else in town. And then there's others that just feel like their home business really isn't negatively affecting the neighborhood, even though um, you know, UPS is there every day, FedEx is there every day and.
I agree that it's pickups on their front porch.
And so, but.
I don't have a home visit or a home business and I have UPS every day. Amazon.
So, yeah, I forgot about Amazon. You know, used to, we were about two, now we got three, so.
My neighbors gonna start complaining.
But those are things that when we look at zoning, we we need to look at, how do we tighten that just a little bit better? But the other thing is, we also have to remember when we look at zoning, if we create a regulation, we need to be able to enforce it. We don't want to create something that is just on the books and then it becomes a headache, because then they say, well, you're not making Mr. Powell comply or you're letting Mr. Stewart get away with it.
We're talking about if the department is staffed a hundred percent, a department of three, who's also doing with new builds, remodels, um, home businesses, what if we have a hailstorm? That's every roofing permit.
Yeah.
Um, it's code enforcement. It's, it's a lot for one. It's an understaffed and underfunded department. We all know that.
And and you're absolutely right. Slater, in the aspect, as soon as you start going after, they go, why are you being heavy-handed? Or they give you a list of twenty-five other people that are not in compliance and you gotta go chase that down as well, so. But those are things we can look at as we go through budget. What can we do differently and better? I will tell you one of the things that it, we may wish we didn't do it, but as we're looking at this, a a new app for the city for with the new water meters, we're looking at ways as well that our public can say, there's a pothole over here and it takes a picture and and gee, I'll say, here's where it's located or there needs to be a street sign. May create more work for us, but I think it gets the public.
Yeah, be a lot more. And then over time.
I think people will start taking some responsibility if if they see how easy it is for folks to say, hey, what about this? Where are we at?
Next item is city manager report, staff updates, project updates, staff, citizen recognition, items of community interest. No action will be taken.
Mayor and council, I sent y'all a list of uh some dates that we have going up. Probably the biggest thing is next Monday, the twenty-third at four thirty. Uh, we're gonna be doing the groundbreaking for the new wastewater treatment plant. We will be inviting council, uh council members, mayor that were on in place when this plant uh was authorized. So uh hopefully the weather cooperates. It's not a hundred and nine or whatever it's supposed to be like tomorrow.
Sorry, what was the date?
June twenty-third.
June twenty-third, one week from today. I'll send y'all a calendar invite so you can just click on your calendars. Um, Wednesday night, uh, Tim Pierce, who's the executive director of SPAG, uh, his retirement reception is in Lubbock. Do you remember what time all that is?
I think like six o'clock issue so at the Texas Tech Club or upstairs over.
Okay.
No, I haven't. I have a conflict that, no.
So are you going with Fisher? No, sir, I will not be in town.
Thank you. Be awesome.
This team's gonna agree over SPAG, really has.
Um, on the twenty-seventh of this month, uh, myself, Andrea and Max will be going to Austin or Georgetown for the Texas Municipal League Legislative uh wrap-up to let us know what the governor signed, what he hadn't signed and kind of where we're we're going with everything. We are closed July fourth and I will be available the rest of this week, but I will be out of the office uh at a meeting and will be returning Sunday. So if you need anything, uh, you got the absolute best that is still here. Um, so questions, anything?
Any update when tech stop, will be back for college athletes?
We were trying to end such a good note of the contractors had a weather delay because they were up north where they got all the rain. So soon as they get caught up there, they're really trying to get back here as fast as they can, so.
We don't, we don't have a.
We don't know the exact date he.
And we're not the boss of that. Yes.
It'll probably be mid-August.
Not funny.
Again, all complaints go to the office of the mayor pro tem and y'all can contact him. Chief, do y'all have anything else? Parkfield, do you have anything you want to add? Yeah, that's all I have.
Guys, with that, we have no other business. We are adjourned.